Okay.
Recording.
We've been a long time on you.
So today's topic is challenges to obeying God. The challenges to obeying God depend on individual beliefs, norms, cultural context. However, some common challenges people may face include a spirit of doubt. The Bible doesn't explicitly mention a spirit of doubt in those exact words, but it discusses doubt and faith in various contexts. Doubt is often portrayed as something to be overcome through faith and trust in God. And here are some relevant passages. So somebody want to read James 1:6-8?
But when you ask, you must believe in that doubt. Because one of the doubts is like a weight of the sea blown and tossed by the wind. That person should not expect to receive anything from the Lord. Such a person is double-minded and unstable in all they do.
Now that sounds a little rough, but it gets my attention that either I believe that he can do what he said he can do, or I don't. And so this scripture is warning us that you can't waver on it. You just have to trust it, even when you don't see it. In Matthew 14:31, it says, "Immediately Jesus reached out his hands and caught him." "You of little faith," he said. And I don't know what happened to the rest of the words. Anyway.
They're in the cloud.
And then in Mark 9:23, it says, "Everything is possible for one who believes." Immediately, the boy's father exclaimed, "I do believe. Help me overcome my unbelie," and I've prayed that a lot. You know, "Lord, help me to believe," because that shows faith. And the Lord tells us that without faith is impossible to please Him.
Valerie, you know, when you're praying for somebody, and praying for somebody, and praying for somebody, and praying for somebody, these nieces and nephews, we've been praying for years for them. And we get, we're on a family prayer thing at night on a conference call. We get discouraged. You know, it's not that we don't believe in God, and it's like, okay, God, how do I pray for this?
Well, we want to see instant gratification. That's where the problem, I think, is.
Yeah, but you know, three or four years of praying about the same thing, you know, it's like, I know God's working, but it just, you get discouraged. And I think we can all, you know, agree with that, that we do.
I do. And so in Romans 14:23, it says, "But whoever doubts is condemned if they eat, because their eating is not from faith. And everything that does not come from faith is sin." So, you know, that's another thought. So these are just some of the scriptures that help us to see why being obedient can be a challenge. Then we have the letter B, secularism and materialism. We live in a world that prioritizes material wealth, success, instant gratification. Living life by religious teachings can be challenging. The pursuit of worldly pleasure may be in conflict with spiritual values. And then we have more, moral relativism. The idea of moral principles are subjective and vary from person to person. It can make it difficult for individuals to adhere to absolute religious truths and principles. It can lead to moral confusion and a lack of conviction in following divine commandments. And then we have peer pressure and social norms. You know, if you work, if you, if you know anybody who's still in the working arena, I mean, if you're born again, you can't fit in. You're going to be a peculiar person. And they will see you that way. As a matter of fact, I just got a text message from some former coworkers who were, in a sense, kind of apologizing to me. Because I worked in an office where I was actually the oldest. Then the next person was 10 years younger than me. And then the next person was 10 years younger. So it was like decades between five of us. And so I was the big mama at the house. And so they used to, you know, say little things. And I knew they were talking about me, you know, I'm like, you know, they're like kids, you know. And so they sent this group text about, "We learned a lot." We're working. And I wanted to say, "You don't know, you guys drove me crazy." But anyway, you still have to be who God called you to be, okay? Even in the midst of the peer pressure and social norms, technical influences, you know, the internet, oh my goodness. Religious persecution, internal struggles and temptations, cultural and general shifts. So there's a lot. We're going to be studying this little story in John, chapter nine. So can somebody open their Bible who can talk loud and read John 9:1-34?
John 39?
John 9.
John 9, verses 1 through 34.
I've got all these other books.
As Jesus was walking along, he saw a man who had been blind for birth. "Teacher," his disciples asked him, "why was this man born blind? Was it a result of his own sins or those of his parents?" "It was not because of his sin or his parents' sin," Jesus answered. "He was born blind so the power of God could be seen in him. All of us must quickly carry out this task assigned us by the One who sent me, because there is little time left before the night falls and all work comes to an end. But while I am still here in the world, I am the light of the world." Then the Spirit, then he spit on the ground, made the mud the saliva, and smoothed the mud over the blind man's eyes. He told him, "Go and wash in the pool of Salom." So the man went and washed and came back seeing. His neighbors and others who knew him as a blind beggar asked each other, "Is this the same man, that beggar?" Some said, "He was," and others said, "No, but he surely looks like him." And the beggar kept saying, "I am the same man."
What verse did you love?
Oh, 234?
234.
Well, you know what, just read up to 10. Did you read up to 10 already?
Yeah, I read up to 10.
Okay, so go to, finish 12, and then 13, table four is going to pick up.
Oh, go to 12, and then?
Yeah, then table four.
"They asked, 'Who healed you? What happened?'" "He told them, 'The man they called Jesus made mud and smoothed it over my eyes and told me, 'Go to the pool of Salom and wash off the mud. I went and washed, and now I can see.'" "Where is he now?" they asked. "I don't know," he replied.
Okay, so right here, I want you to remember what we're reading, because we're going to answer some questions on the next page. So table four, you want to pick up with verse 13 through 17?
13?
Verse 13.
Okay. "So the people marched over to the Pharisees to speak with them. They were concerned, because the miracle Jesus performed by making clay with his saliva and anointing the man's eyes happened on the Sabbath day, a day that no one was allowed to work. Then the Pharisees asked the man, 'How did you have your sight restored?' He replied, 'A man anointed my eyes with clay. Then I washed, and now I can see for the first time in my life.'" "Then an argument broke out among the Pharisees over the healing of the blind man on the Sabbath. Some said, 'This man who performed this healing is clearly not from God. He doesn't even observe the Sabbath.' Others said, 'If Jesus is just an ordinary sinner, how could he perform a miracle like that?'"
Okay, and then table one, you can read verses 18 through 23.
Oh, you want me to read 17 as well?
Oh, yeah, please.
Okay, "This prompted them to turn on the man healed of blindness, putting him on the spot in front of them all, demanding an answer. They asked, 'Who did you say he is, this man who opened your blind eyes? 'He's a prophet of God,' the man replied."
All right, you see, you see what's going on here? Are you seeing what's going on here? I mean, you're thinking, anyway. Table one.
18 through 23?
Yes.
But the Jews did not believe according...
Concerning?
It's King James Version.
You know what, you could actually read what's on your page. It's a little easier version. On page four.
The Jews then did not believe if a blind man had been blind and had recovered sight.
Received.
Not received sight until they called the...
Parents.
Parents of the very young one who had received his sight. And they questioned him, saying, "Is this your son whom you have said was born blind? Then how does he know..."
Now sees.
Now, now he sees. Then he does, he...
His parents then...
Are you on verse 20?
He had, his parents then answered and said, "We know that this is our son and that he was born blind." Continue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But, but how he knew...
Now.
Now sees, we do not know. Who opened his eyes, we do not know. Ask him, he is of age, he will speak for himself. This is, this parent said this because they were afraid of the Jews. After the Jews had already reached the decision that if anyone confessed him to be Christ, he was to be excommunicated.
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 Excommunicated from the synagogue.
Synagogue.
It was, it was for this reason then has the parent, that his parents said, "He is of age as him."
Everybody's pushing it off on somebody else. Okay, now to table five.
"So for a second time they summoned the man who had been blind and said to him, 'Give glory to God. We know that this man is a sinner.' He then answered, 'Whether he is a sinner, I do not know. One thing I do know, that though I was blind, now I see.'" "So they said to him, 'What did he do to you? How did he open your eyes?' He answered them, 'I told you already, and you did not listen. Why do you want to hear it again? You do not want to become his disciples too, do you?'"
Yeah, finish it up.
Okay, "They spoke abusively to him and said, 'You are his disciples, but we are disciples of Moses. We know that God has spoken to Moses, but as for this man, we do not know where he is from.'" "The man answered and said to them, 'Well, here's the amazing thing, that you do not know where he is from, and yet he opened my eyes. We know that God does not listen to sinners, but if someone is God-fearing and does his will, he listens to him. Since the beginning of time, it has never been heard that anyone opened the eyes of a person born blind. If this man were not from God, he could do nothing.'" "They answered him, 'You were born entirely in sin, and yet you are teaching us,' so they put him out."
So we'll take a look at this story. And after reading it, we see that there were some challenges. And there were some challenges for both Jesus and for the blind man. And I should have added the parents, too. So let's take a few minutes and fill these in. So what were the challenges that Jesus faced from the story?
Well, he's standing before the church leaders. They're all watching everything he does, and he knows that. And he knows they're trying to trip him up on everything. They follow the law and the letter of the law and a law of their own making as well. And Jesus is going to show them that he is God, and he can heal in any way he wants to. And on the Sabbath.
Any time he wants.
Yes, yes.
I just can't get over the fact that here's somebody who's been blind all of this time. He's going to get healed, and they're worried about the Sabbath.
Right.
Actually, I think they were worried about people following Jesus instead of them.
That's right.
They didn't know here about what God is...
So Jesus had, what was Jesus's challenge? What was his challenge? Or what would be a challenge for us if we had to do with Jesus?
He led the first.
Well, number one, he broke the law according to...
Yeah, he did something on the Sabbath that he wasn't supposed to.
But he always did. Yeah, I think he wanted to teach the people about God's heart. He wanted to still remain apart, not be excommunicated from the synagogue and not be thrown out of society, so...
Why do you think he did it on the Sabbath?
To get their attention, I think.
It was supposed to be a day of rest.
Yeah, and he was doing something that was totally against their law, but he was the law.
And he was above the Sabbath.
And he was above the Sabbath, you know.
So the challenge that would be for us, I probably worded this wrong. But if it had, if it had have been us, and we had that kind of power, and we do.
And we do.
But if we did it on a day that we're not supposed to do it, we would have the challenge of hearing some feedback from the crowd, right? Right?
Yeah.
And there's some things that maybe the Lord has placed on our heart to do, and we haven't done it because we don't want to hear the feedback. We don't want to deal with that. Right?
Can't please, can't please God and please men.
I know. But I'm just, I'm just sharing some of the challenges.
Oh, that's what I meant, the challenge.
Yeah, right.
If we're trying to please people instead of God.
I don't think any of it was challenging for him. He knew what they were, how they were going to react.
You know, here's the problem. I grew up with this, and it's the legalism of man. And what God was, what Jesus was trying to teach them was the importance of the Sabbath, honoring the Sabbath, but that the Sabbath was meant for man, not man for the Sabbath. And he told them that. And the thing is, man gets involved, and control issues get involved. And then it becomes something way different than what God intended it for it to be. You know, when I grew up, it was holiness, 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 which is great, which is, which is good. But it became so legalistic, and man's laws that were placed on people that were not the laws of God, because it needed to be the law of the heart and not the law of man. When our hearts right, we do right. And Jesus was trying to teach them something. He did it on purpose. He didn't, he didn't just make a mistake. Jesus did this on purpose to confront their legalism that they had created.
I like that, Joanne.
That's good.
Good word.
Thank you. Okay, so to confront their legalism, okay. And anything else? Anybody want to add anything else?
Well, you know, Jesus, I was telling Marie, he was being obedient to what his father wanted him to do, too. And, you know, I think he was trying to teach them that they have to be obedient to God. But they didn't understand that, because everything was in a book. You know, it was all about the laws that were written in the book.
Evident to Moses, not God.
Yeah, and I think that he was trying to teach them that they should have relationships with God, you know, and be obedient to what God wants them to do. And they were so caught up in their, like Joanne said, their legalistic part of their religion. You know, a lot of ceremony stuff, you know, and it was not about relationship, which is so important.
Yeah. Jesus was here to change our hearts.
Amen. So now the blind man, what was, can you see any challenges he might have had?
Can you imagine going home and telling your folks about what happened, and they go, "What?" You know, it's like, but I like what his mom and dad said, you know, "He's a bleeding old age. Ask him what happened." We were there, ask him what happened, you know, it's like, put mud on your eyes, you know, and go wash it off, you know, it's like...
Well, not only that, he spit on it.
He spit on it, yeah.
And so my thing is, if, you know, if that would have happened today, if somebody spit on something, you know, these kids nowadays, "Ugh, he spit on it, I'm not putting that on my..." You know, that kind of mentality.
Put a mask on after that.
But, but we, and he didn't even know who Jesus was. But it shows, the scripture shows that he was desperate.
Well, they kept saying, "You're a sinner. There's no way that this could have happened, you know. You're born a sinner, so you're not going to have these kind of things happen to you." Which is, why Jesus came was to do away with this, you know.
He was born blind, right? Yeah, he was born blind, so he did, you know, he pretty much...
So this man, he, in spite of him not even knowing Jesus, what I see in the scripture is, is he just wanted to see. It was desperation, so he didn't care about the spit in the mud. He was just going to do whatever it took.
Sure. He had done everything else.
I could relate to that, because before I knew Jesus personally, you know, I was in desperation. And at this point, you know, nothing else was working. So I was desperate. I said, "Look, okay, everybody's talking about how great Jesus is. I want to see this greatness. So what does it take to be able to experience the greatness?" And so I was going to put Jesus to the test, and I was going to follow his word. And that's how I got where I am today, because I took the challenge. I took the challenge. And without looking back and listening to the naysayers, you know, "Let's go do this, let's go do that." I'm like, "No, I'm getting ready to put this word to the test."
You're learning to take the doubt out that we were talking about earlier. The doubt, to replace that with a choice of choosing to believe in something we don't have a clue about, but it's worth everything we've got to, to experience that.
Right.
Valerie, this man had to have faith. I mean, if somebody came up to me and I was blind, and they said, and they said, "Put, I'm going to spit and put mud in your eyes." I mean, that's to have faith. I mean, he wanted to see so bad, he was willing to do, you know, what Jesus was going to do to him, you know. And that says a lot for his spirit, you know, as a, as a child of God. And I think, I don't know, but I think he really probably changed his life after this.
Oh, absolutely.
It was another step. He had to obey, yes.
Yeah, had to obey.
That's the point.
He had the faith to obey. Or he just said, "Can't hurt." You know.
And then he was questioned.
Yeah.
You know. Well, who was he? You know, they were sending him through, they were interrogating him. So he went through interrogation and all of that.
All I know is I was blind and now I see.
What's a little mud and spit? In comparison to nowadays having a hole drilled in your head, you know.
He didn't see it coming.
That's right. He didn't know.
Those are faithful.
There you go.
It's simple when you can see it.
How can we tell if it's...
It's got a light on?
Is it blinking?
It beeps when it comes on.
The blue light is on.
You couldn't hear the beep.
It's on.
It was on.
Now it's on again.
It's on. I'm going to show.
He had to have somebody help him to...
Yeah.
He did. I read a book about that when I first got divorced. Don't remember the illustration. Really helped.
Joanne, here she knows.
Let's see if I can figure it out. I can't find the sound.
She brought me in here to show me. Because John uses a computer, too, when he does prayers. Well, she's been table-labeled.
And that was legal, but we couldn't cross.
Okay, once we get the video going, we're, I want you to listen to what he's saying. And then we're going to make a list of the things that stood out to you, okay? So, while she's... It's to make you think, okay? So go to page six real quick. And then the benefits of obeying God according to scriptures. We're going to do this until we get that going. Okay. So, A, table one, can you read A? Prosperity.
Prosperity. In the Old Testament, Ophirian, to God's commandments.
Commandments.
Commandments, sorry, commandments is often linked with promises of blessing and priorities.
Prosperity.
Prosperity.
Hurry.
For example, in Proverbs 28:1-14, God promised to bless those who obey his commandments. Commitment.
Command.
Commandments with...
Abundance.
Abundance, success, and protection.
Right. Okay, table two, do you read B?
Favor and honor.
Favor and honor. Scripture frequently speaks of God's favor and honor upon those who obey Him. Proverbs 3, 1 through 4, for instance, promises that obedience to God's teachings will result in favor with both God and humanity.
Eternal life. In Christian theology, obedience in God's will is often associated with the promise of eternal life. Jesus teaches in John 3:36 that whoever believes in Him has eternal life, while those who disobey will face punishment.
Table in the back?
Joy and peace.
Yeah, read D.
Obedience to God's commands brings joy and peace to the believer's life. In John 15, 10 through 11, Jesus tells His disciples that obeying His commands will result in fullness of joy.
This table here, E?
Protection and guidance. Scripture often emphasizes that, Scripture often emphasizes that obeying God leads to His protection and guidance. Psalm 91, 9 through 12, for example, speaks of God's promise to protect those who love Him and obey His command.
And then spiritual growth. Obedience to God's will is seen as essential for spiritual growth and maturity. Hebrews 5:14 suggests that those who obey God's words are able to discern good from evil and grow in spiritual understanding. And then the last one is eternal rewards. The New Testament frequently speaks of rewards for obedience in the afterlife. In Matthew 25:21, Jesus tells us a parable about the faithful servants who are rewarded with greater responsibility and blessings in the kingdom of heaven. So, this is an activity. At the bottom of page six, it says, "How would you respond to the following accounts as directly? Jesus called His disciples to leave what they were doing and follow Him. Andrew, Peter, James, and John left their fishing business and followed Him in Matthew 4:18, 22. Matthew left his job as a tailor."
Has to be activated by obedience.
I, you know, I was looking through the videos to see what I could do as a teaching tool. And this one is a little longer than what I really wanted, but he kind of hit target on a whole lot of stuff in here that I thought would help us, so...
I want to learn whatever the course is seeking to teach, but don't give me homework and don't give me exams. Well, in college, you need to know that when you audit a course, you not get credit for it, because you didn't put in what the course required. And when you audit the Christian life...
It's a podcast.
By coming to hear the word...
I don't need to lie down.
To be inspired and encouraged by the word, but to not act on the word that you've heard, you may have more knowledge and you may be more inspired, but you won't be changed. Because the transformation in the life through the word has to be activated by obedience. Without that, it becomes information with no credit, that is no transforming value. We're now at the sixth church that the Apostle John has written, the church at Philadelphia. This is the verse, "Philadelphia, the city of brotherly love." And Jesus, who is the spokesperson through the shepherd of each one of these churches, speaks through this leader to the saints at Philadelphia Bible Fellowship at the church in Philadelphia. And notice what he says. Verse seven, "He who is holy, who is true, who has the key of David, who opens and no one will shut, and who shuts and no one opens, says this." He wants to give another description of himself, which he has done in each of these churches, and he describes himself as he who is holy and true. Holy means to be set apart as unique, special, or one of a kind. I describe holy often in using the difference between dishes in the sink, dishes in the kitchen, and dishes in the dining room. The dishes in the sink are dirty. They are dirty dishes, that's why they're in the sink. The dishes in the kitchen are common dishes, you use that for all of your meals. But the dishes in the den, well, they got their own room, they got their own glass case, because they are special. They're not integrated with the common, and they're certainly not integrated with the profane, the dirty. No, that's special, they come out on special occasions. Jesus says, "Don't put me in a room with anybody else. Don't make me another one of the people you recognize. I'm not just a good person, I'm not just a great prophet, I am holy. I am not only holy, I'm also true. Truth has to do with ultimate reality, I'm the real deal. Anything that contradicts me is false and is a lie and cannot be trusted. So you ought to measure everything by the truth, I am the way, the truth, and the life, so everything is to be measured by its inconsistency and compatibility to me. And if it's incompatible and inconsistent with me, it's wrong, no matter who told it to you, how long you believed it, and however you know it. I am truth, I am holy and true. Not only am I uniquely set apart, not only am I ultimate reality, but now it gets to the nitty gritty, he says, "I have the key of David." Now, to appreciate what he's talking about, this is drawn from Isaiah chapter 22, verses 15 to 25. "The steward of the house of David, the kingdom," house of David, David was the king of Israel, which uses that to speak of the kingdom, "the key belonged to this steward, but the steward did not do the right job, so he was fired. And when he was fired, a new steward replaced him. This new steward was Eliakim, and Eliakim was given the key to the kingdom." Not given a key, he was given the key. Jesus says, "I possess the key of the kingdom of David," that is, "I have the kingdom key." Notice it's a single key, because it's a master key. Anybody who possesses a master key can get in any door. All the doors are available to him because he has a master key. So when the Bible speaks of the key, it speaks of two things, access and authority. So Jesus claims access to any door and authority over every door. Let me say that again, Jesus, the one with the key, the master key, has access to every door, which is what a master key gives you, and authority over every door, which is why he says, he can open the doors he wants to open and lock the doors he wants to stay locked, because he is in charge. Now, if you and I don't get that, we gonna think people are in charge. We gonna think power brokers are in charge. We gonna think folk with money are in charge. We gonna think folk with club are in charge. They may have our key, but they don't have a master key. They may have a key to our door, they don't have a key to every door. Jesus says, "I control the kingdom, because I have control of the master key." Or as he says in Matthew 28, verse 19, he says, "All authority has been given to me, not only in the sweet by and by, but in the nasty here and now." Now, in Matthew chapter 16, he says, "I'm gonna build my church, and I will give my church the keys to the kingdom." Watch this now. Jesus says, "I have the master key," that's one key that can lock any door, "but I'm gonna give to my people the church, I'm gonna give them the keys plural to the kingdom." When you use the right key, he'll back it up with the master key. But when you use the wrong key, the master key can back you up, because the master key can only be consistent with the keys that he's given us. Let me put it another way. If you skip God's way to get it done, whatever it is you're trying to get done, then don't just call on God to use his master key when you've ignored the key he gave you. He does not want you to skip the responsibility he's given you and simply call on him, because he got the master key. He wants to know your keys are consistent with his key. I don't give you the keys to the kingdom. Well, what is that? It's authority. I'm going to share my authority with you when you are consistent with me. So what's the problem? He says in verse eight, "I know your deeds. Behold, I have put before you an open door which no one can shut, because you have little power and have kept my word and have not denied my name." Oh, watch it. In order for his key to work for you, for me, and for his church, he says, "You must have kept my word, obeyed me, and not denied my name." So one of the reasons many believers are not seeing God come through is because they do not keep his word, they come to church and hear it, but they do not keep his word and/or they deny his name. They don't want to be publicly associated with him. He says to them, "You have little power. People don't know who you are, they don't appreciate who you are, they don't respect who you are. You don't have what people view as substantive and significant and worth applauding. But he says, "I have set before you an open door." Even though folks say you are a nothing and a nobody, "I have set before you an open door, and when I open this bad boy up for you, the folk with the name, with the money, and with the power will not be able to shut it. But the way I will open the door, and the reason I will open the door for you, your life, your world, and your ministry, is because you have obeyed my word and have not denied my name." See, we got folk want God to open doors while they are ashamed to bear his name. Notice, you can't deny his name. You can talk about God all you want, you can talk about God this and God that, that's not his name. His name is the Lord Jesus Christ, the second person of the Trinity, not this generic God. No, 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 yeah, God is there, but God has bequeathed or delegated everything to his Son. It is that the name of Jesus every bow and every bow confessed, that Jesus is Lord to the glory of the Father. So if folk don't know your relationship to Jesus, you have denied his name, even though you may be talking about God bless you all day long. You haven't denied my name. Jesus says, "When you deny me on earth, I will deny you before my Father who is in heaven. When you confess me on earth, I will confess you before my Father who is in heaven." So if you are ashamed of Jesus Christ and don't want to be publicly associated with him, forget open doors. You can open your own door. He says in verse nine, "You have kept the word of my perseverance, and I will also keep you from the hour of testing, the hour that is about to come upon the whole world." He told in verse nine, "Behold, I have caused those in the synagogue of Satan, who say they are Jews and are not, but lie. I will make them come and bow down at your feet, and make them know that I have loved you." He said, "All those false folk out there, synagogue of Satan, they go to church, synagogue, but they up the devil. Just because you in church, synagogue, doesn't mean you up the Lord. There is a synagogue of Satan, all right? Religious talk doesn't mean a thing." He says, "But I'm gonna let them know that I have loved you." Even though you got a little power, I'm gonna let them know you got more power than you look like you have. Maybe you remember the story about a big dog and little puppy. A German Shepherd and a poodle was standing at a door, and Big Dog, the shepherd, looked at the poodle and said, "You, little puppy, you can't do much, look how small you are." Said, "Now, look at this door. What amount would it take you to get open this door? Because I can open this door, I can open this door quickly, because I'm big and I can reach the knob. You can't even reach the knob. Let's have a contest, let's see who can open the door the quickest." Little puppy said, "Okay, you go first." Big Dog, German Shepherd jumped up on the door, got his mouth around the knob, and put his mouth all around the knob and started twisting at the knob. And after about two and a half minutes of working the knob, he got the door open. Then he pulled it shut, and he said, "A big dog, a little puppy." Because Big Dog didn't show you, you can't even reach the knob. Your turn." Little puppy came up to the door, gave a small buck, scratched the door, the man on the inside came and opened it. Don't let it bother you if you're a little puppy, because if you know the Lord, he's got the key, and he can open up what the big dogs can't open. If you're in a situation and the door has not yet opened, he says, "Consider it a test." And he says, "And I'm gonna walk you through the test until I reverse it." He said, "I'm gonna make your enemies your footstool." Nothing makes God real than when he reverses the irreversible. Nothing makes God more real than when he flips something to look unflippable. Nothing made God so powerful to you when there was no way out, you were trapped, the devil looked like he was running the whole show, and then he reverses it. But you may say, "But I don't see him doing anything." Oh, yeah, well, look at the next verse. He says, "You're going through this test, and I'm gonna keep you through this hour, but I am coming quickly, hold fast what you have, so that no one will take your crown." See, when God is silent, that doesn't mean he's still. I know he don't see him doing anything, I know it looks like you're just waiting for nothing, but God likes to come in suddenly. He likes to break in when you didn't expect it, when you didn't think there was any way that this thing could ever get better, that this trial could ever end. He loves to do something suddenly, and the reason why he likes to do things quickly or suddenly is so that when it happens, there is no debate on who caused it to take place, because it, it came out of nowhere, quickly. You wonder, "Whoo, where did that come from?" And it becomes inextricably clear that this was heaven invading history, he wants to blow your mind. And so, "Whoo," he comes through suddenly. Make sure you obey and not deny him. You hold fast to your obedience and non-denial, and at his time, suddenly. And now he gives us his final statement. "He who overcomes..." Overcomes what? The tendency to give up. "He who overcomes the tendencies to stop obeying and to stop denying. He who overcomes..." Look at this, "I will make him a pillar in the temple of my God. He will not go out from it anymore. I will write on him the name of my God and the name of the city of my God, the new Jerusalem, which comes down out of heaven from my God and my new name." You see the word there, "name, name, 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 name." "I'll make you a pillar in my temple," a temple is God's house. Galatians 2:9 says that Peter, James, and John were the pillar of the church, they were holding up the church. In other words, he speaks of these people who overcome the propensity to give up as being in closest proximity to God. Jesus said in St. John chapter 2, verses 23 to 25, it says, "Many believed on him, many believed on him, but he would not commit himself to them, because he knew what was in them. They got saved, but they had not yet got committed. They were on their way to heaven, but he couldn't use them on earth. They were forgiven for their sins, but they didn't want folk to know that they were Christians. They went to church, but they wouldn't obey the word. So they believed in him, but he would make no commitment to them. He wants to know that you're all in, that you're a full-time Christian, not a part-time saint. He wants to know that you will not deny him, and that you will obey what he has commanded. And he says to that one, I will give him a name." You know, when you, when people go to the cowboy game, that folks who are sitting in the stands, we don't know their name. Now, they're in the location, but we don't know their name. When it comes to the players, we know their names kind of sorta. When it comes to the players, we know their names kind of sorta. Because if I were to ask you to name the name of the right God, many of you couldn't do that. If I asked you to name the name of the punter, many of you couldn't do that. But now when we upgrade and start talking about wide receivers and quarterbacks and running backs, well, you know those names, because those names have achieved a greater name in publicity because of the role they play on the team. But then, not only do you have the folk in the crowd and the folks on the team, some more nameless than others, some with a higher name, you got the ring of honor. In the ring of honor, those are folk who made a name. You see, the players come and go, but the folks in the ring of honor stay there, because over time, they held fast. Over time, they played the game. Over time, they didn't quit when they were injured. Over time, they stayed committed to the task. In fact, their name is not only in the ring of honor, their name is in Canton, Ohio, in a bust in the Canton Hall of Fame, so that generation after generation will know who their name was. God has a lot of Christians that are in the stands. They just show up to watch the game. All they want to see is what the choir is singing and what the preacher is preaching, and they just come for the show. But then there are some folk in the kingdom of God who don't want to just stay in the stands. They want to get on the field. They serve in ministry. They help other people. They get to the advancement of the cause of the Lord. And then you got some superstars. Those are the ring of honors. Oh, it's not just the people who you know their name. It's folk who are the unknown folk, but you can count on them. You can depend on them, because they are forever holding their roles, loving the Lord, serving the saints, giving to the Lord, and giving glory and their witness for the Lord. So I want to challenge you today. If you want God to put you in the ring of honor, if you want when he hears you and sees you to say, "Well done, my good and faithful servant." If you want him to call you out of the crowd and let all of heaven know you're one of his choicest servants, I challenge you to leave the stands, to come on the field. Now, I want to tell you the truth. You're gonna get blocked a little bit on the field. You're gonna get tackled a little bit on the field. But when they start handing out Super Bowl rings, you're gonna get a Super Bowl ring, because you are a Super Bowl saint. So let's get busy glorifying the Lord, obeying the Lord, not denying the Lord, because if you are an obedient saint who does not deny him, you are overcome.
That was so good.
That was good. I want to be in the ring of honor.
I thought it was encouraging. It was a little rough ride, but it's hopeful. It gives you hope and encouragement. So did anybody write anything down?
I think the first thing we have to remember that God is a covenant God. And that he says, "If you do this, then I will do that." And so, he gets his key.
Yeah, he said, "If you're not obedient, and you don't have to want God actually to do, like she's saying, you need to be obedient on that, because if you don't, you don't get a blessing, you know, from what God is asking you to do." So when God gives you a key to do something, you need to act on it. I love it when he said that he gives the church the keys, you know, and he has the... When he starts a church, we all have the key. We all have the key, you know? As believers in Christ, we are given that key, you know? And we need to open up the doors that God wants us to open up. And if we don't, then we're not obedient to what he wants us to do.
Can you think of anybody in the scripture where they use their own key?
In the scripture, they use their own key? Well, Saul did. Saul did, before he became Paul. Saul did.
I think about Abraham and Sarah.
Abraham and Sarah, yeah.
And we're still dealing with their issue today. So when we obey God, it doesn't matter what the circumstances look like to us. And I always find that God always confirms what he wants you to do. So you're not in doubt. I wonder if this is God telling me to do this. All you do is ask him, "Lord, is this you?" Okay, I'm not sure. Can you make it plain? Oh, he'll make it plain. He'll confirm it for you. So...
I think this kind of goes along with Pastor's sermon on Sunday, because he said, "Unless we're under God's authority in our own personal lives, then we don't have the ability to have Jesus's authority." Because that's an authority of obedience and being of God. And then in my morning devotion, the verse goes, "Do not grow weary in doing good." And this just kind of confirmed that, because you do. And he was saying, "You keep praying and praying and praying, and this really encouraged me that you just keep obedience and praying and don't grow weary of doing good," as it says in Deuteronomy, "You will read but believe not."
And I think that's why it's so important to sustain the word of God, because if you don't, you lose that hope. It's almost like his word, by studying his word daily, it gives you a shot of energy and an uplift, and it keeps you focused.
Because it's alive.
So if you stay away from the word and you try to do what the Lord tells you, you go, you get discouraged. You start losing hope, but you pick his word up again and you start reading it. It's just like you said, it's alive.
The loving word of God.
And when we stay connected, we keep each other accountable to what he's saying. And if we get out of line, someone's there to tell us so, build us up.
On page eight, I was having this conversation with one of my friends, and I was thinking of my growth chart. There's a lot of activity going on on here, but if you follow from the beginning, we need faith in order to surrender. And if you see the word faith down here, it starts off with a little F and then the A is a little bit bigger than the I. Well, that's you growing in faith. You don't just get a dynamic faith all at once. With me, it was as the Lord was showing me his power and his will, my faith increased. And my faith has still grown. I'm still not there. And so, James 2:36 emphasizes the importance of actions accompanying one's faith, suggesting that genuine faith should be demonstrated through a deed or not just words. And it's not the other way around. So, you know, faith without works is dead. So if you have this faith, what it's going to do is encourage you to move to the next step. And so, you know, and then just trust on that journey, going down to surrender. And then going over to the right is actually the sanctification process. Your learning. And then you go back up, and you obey. And through your obedience, you're being transformed. And anyway, I said all of this to say, at the end, God gets glorified.
Trust and obey, there is no other way. To be happy in Jesus, just trust and obey.
Well, I think we covered...
I get a song every morning, and I play it on my phone for my husband every morning. This is the song God just put in my head today.
Valerie?
Yes.
Tony Evans mentioned scripture, actually, he quoted it very powerfully, from Revelation 3. "Because you have kept the word of my patience, I also will keep thee from the hour of temptation, which shall come upon the whole world, to try them that dwells on the earth. Behold, I come quickly. Hold that fast which you have, that no man may take your crown. In that overcomes, will I make a pillar in the temple of my God, and he shall no more go out; and I will write upon him the name of my God and the name of the city of my God, which is New Jerusalem, which comes down out of heaven from my God, and I will write upon him a new name."
What a promise.
Isn't that something to hang on to? And we're getting close.
That is.
Yeah, we are.
Getting close.
That was a word to hang on to.
Has anybody here experienced the hand of God because they were obedient? Who?
Yeah, just, to me, it's kind of a weird story, but it happened a couple of weeks ago. We were babysitting with our littlest grandchildren, and I was doing breakfast and getting four kids out the door that two of them don't even want to go, you know? But the little biddies, the two little boys were happily doing everything I asked them to do. And in the meantime, I'm trying to do dishes and stuff, and I just sat in my kitchen, and I keep running into the dishwasher and whacking my, the same place, the same bone, over and over again. I'm like, "Boy, does this hurt?" You know, like, "Wow, this is really bad." And then I hear, "Ask the little one to pray." And I'm like, "Yeah, right. He's six years old. Ask the little one to pray." "Can't hurt."
I remember you talking about...
I know. So I said, and I thought, "I don't know if he knows if I tell him, is he gonna know anything? I don't know. He's a smart kid, but he's, you never know." So I went over there and I said, "You see Grandma's leg where it's turning black and blue and it's all swollen up?" And he goes, "Oh, yeah." And I said, "Would you pray for me?" Drops to his knees, puts his hand right on him, says, "Jesus, Grandma's really hurting herself. Can you..." He just, he prayed just like we do. And I'm like, "Where'd he get that?" He took his hand off, no black and blue, no pain.
What did you say to him?
What did I say to him?
Did you say anything to him?
I'm sorry?
Did you say anything to the little one that prayed for you?
No, I said, "Can you pray for me?"
Afterwards.
I said, "Wow, it's all better." And he said, "Yep."
And they say out of the mouth of... They say suffer not the little children such as the kingdom.
Yeah, just taking it for granted. I didn't know what he knew or didn't know, but the whole praying thing, faith thing and everything. I guess, you know, he's in a Christian school and they're very, very conservative and everything, but I didn't know. I didn't know if he'd even look at me and go, "Yeah, Grandma, right." That would have been a ten-year-old.
You know, I did children's church for about probably ten years. You know, when they start saying things, you don't realize that they get it, and all of a sudden, you just realize that they're finally getting it. I was helping with mother's time out, the older kids. We were babysitting in this room over here, and they had a mess. They had blocks everywhere, and two of the boys started fighting. And Nikki, who's in class, stood on her chair, and she says, "In the name of Jesus, I want you to quit doing that, because Jesus does not want you to act like that. He wants you to be friends with each other. So be friends and quit that fighting." And I thought, "Wow." You know, the faith of little kids, I mean, and those boys turned around and they quit fighting, and they hugged each other, and it was like...
That's amazing.
Yeah, I think she's gonna be an evangelist. I don't know.
Or a teacher.
Or a teacher.
How old was she?
Nikki, how old is Nikki now? Nikki's five now.
Six? She's six now.
She's six. She was five then. But just last week, we were, you know, John's had that, you know, they get sick in their family, around and around and around this. And Nikki says, "Ms. Penny, do you want to pray for my family?" And I said, "Yes," and so I prayed, and then she said, "I'm gonna pray too." She says, "In the name of Jesus, we want these bugs out of our house." I'm just claiming that the bugs are gonna be gone. You know, "Jesus, you can take care of this, and we just love you for taking care of this situation." You know, it's like, "Wow." I wish I had that kind of faith sometimes, because kids have it, you know? And it's just amazing. We need to have the faith in little children.
That's what Jesus said.
Yeah. It's natural to question it. What, really? This really works. Yeah, it's natural. It's the nature of man.
It's pretty human.
But you learn. If you start to listen and obey, your faith gets built. Goes on and on and on. Doesn't mean you're not gonna die, you know?
Alyssa, I mean, Alyssa, she probably sees that in the classroom.
We, as Christians, we need to make supernatural... It's wonderful that teaching the children when they're tiny, because about spiritual things, and healings happen, and Jesus does this for us, you know, God sent him for us. Because in so many other cultures, they're, they teach them spiritual things from birth, and it is not hard for them to get that there is a spiritual area of life. There's a spiritual realm. In America, we tend, in some churches in some areas, not to teach the children that this is possible through our Father God and the Holy Spirit. And I just love what Penny's telling us, what people, you know, that they know from the time they're tiny.
We'd be surprised what kids know. A lot of times, we don't involve them because they're kids. They're not ready, but they are ready.
They need to be ready. We need to be serious about teaching them from the time they're infants.
Exactly.
I nanny my Emily, when she was first born, because Amanda had to go back to work right away. One day, I picked her up on the changing table, and I was looking in her face, and I said to her, "Did you talk with Jesus this morning? Have you been with him this morning?" And her face, this little infant's face, just lit up, and her eyes just expanded. The pupils in her eyes got real big, and she just grinned, and then it was like, the look on her face was like she was remembering something. It was so amazing to me. It just, I stood there and looked at her and go, "You were in the presence of Jesus this morning." I could tell. The whole, her whole little person was just so different all of a sudden. And I was like, "You know, I wonder if God just really spends a lot of time until they're able to interact with us at a level..." I think he's still interacting with them at that fresh, new, innocent stage of just...
And if maybe in utero.
Yes, exactly.
Why not?
Somebody, it is actually 12 o'clock, and we could probably stay here another hour talking. I've enjoyed your own testimonies and sharing. So it's now time to close out and pray. Katia, I got you. So who would like to close us out in prayer?
I will. We praise you. We worship you. We adore you. We thank you for our teacher who is pouring so much into the lessons, and we thank you for all that we've been learning and doing. And Father God, we ask you to keep us close to you when we leave this building today. We ask that you would stay close to our heart and our mind, and that our best thoughts would be of you today, and that we would think on you today, that all of the distractions that are going to bombard us when we leave here will take second place, not first place, to you. Help us, Lord, to remain faithful, to not give up, even though we get weary and well-doing. This was such a good lesson for not giving up, not quitting. Your promises, your promise in Revelation is so powerful to us if we keep on, if we push through, if we pray through, and we remain steadfast. Help each one of us, Lord God, to be that person. Thank you, Jesus. We cannot thank you enough. We love you, Lord. Give us that childlike faith, Lord. Help us to not resist when you deal with us as children. Thank you.
Did you get this word to you yesterday?
Yeah.